Okay. We good? We on? Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we will ask Councilwoman Nolan Gunnel to do our opening.
Thank you. So, being so close to Memorial Day, I wanted to take a minute and give a little reflection on on this. We have Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Memorial Day is specifically to honor those who were killed in the uniform, and Veterans Day is for those who wear the uniform. Got a couple quotes that I want to read. "Our flag does not fly because the wind moves it. It flies with the last breath of each soldier who died protecting it." Author unknown. And the last one, "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter the words, but to live by them." So, I thought those meant a lot to me. Memorial Day is something I hope we all take the opportunity to sit and reflect upon the freedoms which we enjoy because of the freedoms which others do no longer have, and they gave that up, and so I so appreciate that. And those are going to be my remarks, and I will also do a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this day as we give thanks for the opportunity in this land which we live in and the government which we get to participate in. Grateful for those men and women who have served in the past and who continue to serve today, to provide this freedom and this choice, and the peace which we so abundantly enjoy. May we all take part in this government and do our part, and also give thanks to those who serve and protect us. We ask for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would also like to note that our council chair, Sandy Goodlander, is not able to join us today, so she's watching us, so everybody can wave, but that's about it. Well, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the revised agenda.
Thank you. The motions are second?
Second.
Second by Keegan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now, we, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes from May 13, 2025.
I approve and I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, anything for the discuss? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll need to abstain because I wasn't here.
With one abstention. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, we will move on to the report from our county executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have an appointment. Last meeting, I had presented to you appointments to our Government Conduct Committee, but due to an oversight, we forgot one of the names. We're supposed to have an alternate member, alternate county elected official member, and I intended to appoint Bryson Ben to that seat, and thank you Bryson for being willing to serve in that. So, I would present that additional name to be added to the names that were presented last time for the Government Conduct Committee.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and accept it. Do we need to accept that recommendation?
Yeah, for advice and consent.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to accept this recommendation.
So moved.
By Mark. Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And another, another recent action by the council was the formation of the Cache County Fire Department Board of Appeals, and in response to that, I would like to present three names to serve on that Board of Appeals, and those names are Mike Young, Paul Burnson, John Keller. Mike Young is the Bureau Manager for the Utah State Fire Marshal's Office, and Paul Burnson was our building official here for many years, I think still does that for Nibley City, very familiar with building codes, et cetera, and John Keller is Deputy Fire Marshal for Logan City Fire Department. So, they're all three very familiar with what the needs of the fire code might be, and I think very well qualified to serve on our Fire Department Board of Appeals. So, I would present their three names to you for advice and consent at this time.
Okay, thank you. Accept a motion?
Motion approved. Those three names, Mike Young, Paul Burnson, and John Keller, to the County Fire Department Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. We have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, the last thing is just a couple of updates on some meetings I've had the last week, actually. I've had a good meeting with our Trails Coordinator, Landis, about the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, and they've been making so much good progress. We have more good news coming. We're working on an agreement right now for some additional funding that we're excited about announcing soon. But I just want to thank our Trails Cache, our staff, and everybody who has been helping and making so much progress on securing funding and constructing trails out there. Also had an opportunity to visit with our interim USU President and a few vice presidents last week. Had a great discussion with them about community needs and collaboration between the community, the county, and the university, and thankful for their leadership up there. Had a meeting last week as well with some nonprofit leaders, and a lot of nonprofits are really struggling right now with funding for a variety of reasons. Some of them economic, some of them related to federal funding, and we had a good discussion about, about how things are going, and it was mostly a listening session. We'll probably have some additional discussions and meetings to hear and see if there are resources we can point them to. I had an opportunity to, to attend the kickoff for the Summer Citizens Program last week as well. The Summer Citizens are now here in the valley. As of that day, there were 555 of them. I'm sure they're approaching 600 now, so that's a pretty good number. Just as comparison, last year on opening day, there were 500, so there were about 10% more.
Sorry, what was the number? How many?
555 this year. Last year was 500 on opening day. They ended up, I think, close to 600 last year, so we should be over 600 this year.
Is there plenty in over the next couple of weeks?
Exactly. So, we're, we're glad to have them here and to welcome them to our community, and we especially welcome all the dollars they come and spend here. It's great, it's great for our economy. Also had a meeting with the Mountain Crest Mountain Bike Team last week. They're interested in finding a location where they might put a practice track for their team. They've been looking at a variety of locations, and I'll share more information with you about that if, if we find a location that might work for them. Had a meeting with Sunrise Engineers and Smithfield City, Hyde Park City, about Bobcat Way, Wolf Pack Way connection. Sunrise Engineers is doing a study right now to determine the best alignment for that route to connect from Wolf Pack Way to Bobcat Way.
Will you remind us what these roads are?
Yes.
Because Wolf Pack and Bobcat don't mean much to me if we live in the south end of the valley. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You'll have to ask Dave what a Bobcat is, but Wolf Cat, Wolf Pack, we're calling it Wolf Cat Way where they connect. So, Wolf Pack Way is the road that goes in front of Green Canyon High School. They're, they're both approximately two blocks east of Main Street, although they, they jog back and forth, and that's one of the things that we're trying to determine is how exactly they should connect with each other, because there is a missing link between Hyde Park Lane and the south end of Smithfield. And there are a couple of local roads that connect parts of it, but there's not, there's not a connection now between the road that is right in front of Skyview is the one that's referred to as Bobcat Way, but there's discussion about potentially connecting that to a road that's behind Lee's Marketplace, or a way to maybe connect to both, and that's why the engineering firm has been studied to look at the options there. So, the engineering firm has been tasked with bringing back three options, and, and then I would anticipate that someone or jointly Hyde Park, Smithfield, maybe the county as well, would, would apply for some cog funds to construct that missing link, because the, the portion in between is in the unincorporated area as well. So, some of it in Hyde Park, some in Smithfield, and some in the unincorporated area. Also, we had our, our CEO Board meeting. That's our County Economic Opportunity Board. We had that meeting last week and had some training from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Appreciate them coming up here and helping us figure out how we're supposed to be doing that and what funding sources they provide to us. And had, had a meeting with a farmer who approached me and is interested in using our open space that we acquired up in Sherwood Hills area to, to put some, some animals on that land. It looks like somebody's already using that for some agricultural use. There's some equipment out there. I reached out to the previous owner to try to find out if someone has a lease or is using it, or who that is. I haven't heard back. I don't know if any of you have information about if there's an existing lease.
I talked to the gentleman who's been leasing it. He's trying to find paperwork.
Okay.
He's contacted me about what his options are, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, if you could connect me to him. I, I told the person that reached out that we needed to find out if somebody already had an agreement and all of that, but it might be something we would want to consider until we figure out something else to do up there, nothing else to keep the fire, fire risks down. And last thing I want to mention, we had a, a meeting with UDOT last week about the Trenton Bridge Replacement Project, and there's a lot going on with that. Appreciate Matt's help and leadership on that, and also appreciate UDOT and their funding to help us do that. We do have some responsibilities on that project, but they are handling most of it and paying for most of it. So, those are just a few of the meetings I had over the last week that I thought you might be interested in hearing about, and that concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We will continue with our agenda. We'll move on to item number six. Our chief hammer is here to talk to us about a proposal to donate excess fire engines to the fire departments outside of Cache County.
Thanks. I had the fire chief from Box Elder County approach me. We've got four fire engines in our back lot that are accessed out and have been replaced. They're all 1996 models. There's a couple options we have for that. One is to put them on surplus and just see what they go for. Another is to try to work through a broker to see if he can sell them. I've looked at the broker prices, and there's a lot of inventory on the broker's list, and they're, they're pretty expensive. As we are, you know, as an industry, the fire service is always looking for ways to help each other, and these two departments are really small. One's budget is only $2,500 a year, and they have to pay their own utilities. That, that's not enough to buy one set of turnout gear, and their engine is, their engine doesn't hold water, and they can't get it to start most of the time. So, they're really desperate. I thought that since we're not going to be using these anymore, we might be able to donate those to these two departments. For a donation to be allowed, the executive has to approve it, and he's done so, but because it's going for less than the value of the property, the council would have to give their authorization for that as well. So, I would like to ask if we could donate those two units to those two departments in Box Elder.
And then the other two, you'll just try to surplus somehow, or what?
You know, if it was up to me, I'd talk to some of the other state folks that know departments that are hurting like this and donate them as well.
Do they?
Two for one?
If they come and pick them up.
Do they start?
We'll have to recharge the batteries, but they, they hold water and they run. I mean, it, interesting thing with these is they're from the smaller departments, so they still have original tires from 30 years ago. Mileage is low, but when you have engines that get older, they start to require a lot more maintenance. It's typically the pump system, hydraulics, all the valves start to go, seals start to rot, and when they start to leak like that, then they just, they turn into a, for us, what we consider kind of a drain on maintenance budget. For a department like that to have something that works is a big step above what they've already got, so.
In your letter, you said the auction value, or street value, I guess, would be usually between 1 and 6,000.
Yeah, usually like on a surplus auction, I'd be surprised if we see anything more than that.
But that's about the, the estimate for the value?
Yeah.
Of what we'd be donating?
I'm fine with that. I think it's a good gesture. Helps some fire department to help some citizens out.
I'm curious where the money goes if we do sell it. Does it just go back into?
Goes back into general fund.
Into general fund.
I agree with Nolan. I think it's a good gesture, and we should work with the different communities.
Okay, so it sounds like, you can go ahead and, I, I think we need to vote on this. Normal procedure would be that surplus would be taken care of by the executive for sale, but where this is going for, as a donation, so under the market value, we would need to approve that. So, I'll, I'll accept a motion to approve this donation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Nolan and second by Barbara. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It's unanimous.
Can I ask just to clarifying, is that to donate all of it, all four of them, or just the two?
I voted with the understanding it was the two.
I thought it was just two, and yeah.
Okay, okay.
Is that what everyone else, I, my understanding was it was the two.
That's why I ask.
If you find another needy department, then bring the other two?
Will do.
Is that what we would say? Okay.
One was going to Portage?
Pardon me. One to Portage and one to Fielding. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and is Matt here? Matt's here, sorry. Hi, Matt. Matt's going to give an update on Western Corridor and US 8991.
Matt Phillips, Public Works Director. Madam Chair, Goodlander asked to come get an up, give us an, to give you guys an update on the US 89 in the Western Corridor. So, I'm going to invite Jeff up so he doesn't have to walk up in a minute, but Jeff's going to give, we're going to tag team this one, and so Jeff will talk about the US 8991. So, that will be the presentation part. So, unfortunately, I don't have a nice presentation, Andrew, but I just had a few bullet points just to kind of make sure the council's up to speed on what we're doing with the Western Corridor study as a recap, right? That was Congressman Blake Moore, who was able to get $2 million, with the help of other people as well, in the name of Cache County. So, Cache County is, that's why I'm here, is because that's not the CNPO, that's part of Cache County, even though Jeff has a lot to do with the regional transportation. As, just kind of a recap, that concept of some kind of arterial road on the western side of the valley has been on transportation plans and a concept and talked about for more than 25 years. So, with all the pressure we have in the valley, now's the time to continue to find that corridor, to make sure that we're preserving land and that we can plan for transportation needs. We, we all know that grids work very well, right? So, at a certain distance, you need certain roads, whether that's in the city. So, an arterial over there makes sense somewhere. It's just we don't know exactly what that spacing is, and so that's something this study is, is going to try to find out for us, what that west side of the valley looks like, what's an appropriate grid spacing, you know, is that a, what type of arterial that is, you know, widths, all those things. This study's aim is to figure that out. Currently, there is plans on a CNPO plan. I think what Jeff and I and everyone else are trying to make sure that the public is aware of and the council is, that's just a line on a map. That's kind of a concept. It's a placeholder. We don't know exactly where this road's going to go. We don't know how far north and south it's going to go. So, again, this study's very important so that we can determine where that is. Because of the way the federal money's working, UDOT has came in and they're going to help us with the contracts. They're going to help with procurement. They're helping get the consultant on board. Right now, that consultant is probably going to get an NTP to proceed probably this week on a Phase One. Phase One's going to last probably about six months, where that Phase One will find out what the scope should be. How do we study? It'll start to get the stakeholder, the agencies, landowners engaged. There'll be websites set up, and that's really where the study will kind of start to identify that. Why do we need a road? Where should it go? What should it look like? And so, in the, in the near future, the public, the council, landowners, other stakeholders will have an opportunity to, to weigh in, give their comments, you know, express traffic needs, you know, making sure that we're looking at wetlands, environmental processes, you know, where do things go? Where's our transportation needs? So, there will be a lot of information that will be coming available and lots of opportunities for people to participate in those stakeholder meetings and give input to help guide the study forward. So, again, nothing is set in stone now. We're hoping that this whole process from start to finish is in like 18 months, so. Is it, any questions, Jeff? Anything I think I could add? So, okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, council. I'm Jeff Gilbert with the Cache MPO. Grateful to be here. On that Western Corridor, need to express appreciation of the council to get, and the executive for help getting that. You were really involved with Congressman Moore's office in kind of promoting that, and really, as Matt said, we're just at the time. We need to put meat on the bones as far as what that is and how we can preclude having to pull those structures and get, get after corridor preservation, so we're grateful for that. But I'm going to shift gears here now and talk about 8991 Corridor. So, go ahead, next slide. So, the, in 2006, there was a corridor study done on the Cache County side of this highway, and it resulted in a corridor agreement that sort of specified signal locations, tried to facilitate future planning of what that road needs to be in the future and allow the cities who were, and the county who were signatories to that agreement kind of plan for that. Well, that was back in 20, 2006, and a lot has changed. And so, UDOT decided about a year and a half ago that it's time to re-study that or revisit that. In fact, the corridor agreement itself contemplated a, a 15-year revisit. And so, they engaged in this process. They decided to actually have the whole study area go from Brigham City to 10th West in Logan rather than just the Cache Side, because there's, we're, we're inseparably tied to them, and there's issues on the whole corridor. So, over the course of the last year and a half, they've engaged. There's been various stakeholder meetings, county executive, council people have been involved, cities, and, and a whole bunch of meetings. Next slide. So, what I'll present here, and I'll do it quickly, is just some initial concepts. Again, these aren't set in stone. There's work to be done, but this is sort of setting the initial concepts and get us oriented to where we might be headed. And again, this process will result in amendment to that 2006 corridor agreement, of which Cache County will be asked to be a signator to that, as well as the other jurisdictions on the south corridor. So, probably no one in this room was old enough to have, to remember when the first traffic signal went in, in Cache Valley. I'm assuming that's the case, because it was a long time ago.
Got some finger pointing going on.
I'm not sure if you were, but the first electric traffic signal was actually invented by someone, a Utah. A cop in Salt Lake County, or Salt Lake City, invented the first electrified traffic signal. His name was Lester Wire, coincidentally, and it was in 1912. So, it's a good chance our valley saw a signal pretty early because it came from Utah. I don't know when it was. It was probably a bittersweet day, because we don't like things to change, and that's a s, a signal, a signal of change, I guess. Well, there's another bittersweet day, and that is we're kind of putting on the radar a, a transition to interchanges. And for the first time, we've had interchanges proposed in Cache Valley from UDOT. So, I'll go over some of these concepts. Again, these are a long ways off, but it's, it's getting us oriented to that corridor is likely going to change to meet the travel demands. I mean, it's, it's our, obviously, our most important corridor. It's our connection to Wasatch Front. For all intents and purposes, it's our I-15, because we don't have anything else. So, it's an important corridor. Next slide. So, I'm going to go over where they're proposing, and again, these are just concepts. They're not engineering design, although I do note that this puts us in a bit of a pickle, because we have these concepts. They're a ways off, but yet we're left, these jurisdictions, as development happens to, you know, what do we do with it? How do we react to it? How do we keep that, those buildings out, so we're not having to have taxpayers incur those costs? But this is the first one they're, they're having concept. I, I will say they do have, in concept, the, an interchange in the long term for the Mount Pisgah Road. You're aware of the challenges there, although there, it's an issue of who pays what and what the timing is, but they do have a concept there. So, this is the one, first one in the valley. This is Highway 23. There's a safety issue here. There's been fatalities, or at least one fatality. So, UDOT's saying in the long term, that's the right answer is that, is interchange. The volumes are a long way off from that. Interchanges cost between 100 and 150 million dollars to construct, so you can't really justify an interchange with the volumes that are in there now. But over time, UDOT is saying that should be an interchange.
Will you explain what an interchange is?
So, an interchange is just grade separation, like a freeway-type intersection, where you have onramps and offramps, and usually grades separated, you know, where you have one leg go over or under.
Like an overpass, underpass type?
Correct, yeah. Sorry, I should have explained that.
Thank you.
So, in the interim, though, this is a ways off. They're proposing a concept, next slide, or should I do this? Sorry. They're proposing a interim fix that's much less costly to do what's called an R-cut. These, these are fairly new to Utah. I, I've heard them called Michigan Jug Handles. I think Texas does some of these, but it's to eliminate that left-hand turn, whereas the conflict, that's where the safety issues come from, is that. And they're not the greatest thing in the world. They, they, you may be familiar in Leighton, by the Leighton Hills Mall, they have one, and that's just to deal with an operational safety issue. It's, it's to deal with the fact that you can't really signalize this intersection, so it's, it's sort of a fix. UDOT is designing this such that they can accommodate truck turn radiuses and farm vehicles, but it is, I know Wellsville has struggled getting a handle on this, but the challenge there is the compelling safety issue in the interim before the interchange, and the fact that an interchange costs so much, and the volumes just aren't there for a long time. Next slide. The next interchange concept they proposed is at the intersection of 101 in Wellsville. And again, this would be a fairly dramatic undertaking, because you'd have to deal with the railroad crossing, and how do you manage that, as well as those four legs of traffic? So, that's another concept they've proposed. Next slide. And then 10th West in Logan and, and the highway would be another interchange proposal. So, as you see this, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Highway 89 in Weber and Ogden, I think they used to call it Mountain Road. If you saw that, that transition from kind, sort of an arterial-type road with signals and accesses to more of an expressway type road, and I think what UDOT is saying here is they're suggesting, we're, we're at the beginning of that sort of transition to deal with the future travel demand. Next slide.
It'd be a lot easier now.
For sure.
Than it will when they did, had to do it down there in Weber County.
Yeah, and you also look at what they had to do with Bangor Highway to do that. It's, it's crazy costly. So, there is a concept of a shared-use path. In some of the prior planning we had, the concept was even a, maybe a shared-use path along it that could also accommodate slow-moving farm vehicles, because that's a big issue for ag viability on that corridor, is slow-moving farm vehicle. That's one concept that's been discussed. Next slide. Next slide. Another deal, the thing to deal with is accesses on there. I mean, ideally with this type of road, we want to minimize accesses. Right now, there's about eighty-nine accesses on that corridor. Many of them are driveways, so it's probably incumbent on UDOT and others as, as properties become available, you know, we, we really don't want residences fronting on that road over time and we're going to have to figure out a way to do that. Next slide. So the, the corridor agreement that's being brewed right now will include these ten different items. R-cut, intersection, we talked about, a proactive access management policy. They're talking about implementing variable speed limits. That's in Sardine Canyon. That's to accommodate bad weather like they have in Parley's and other places. Shared use path. Eventually in portions, more of the northern portions as it connects to Cache Valley, there's a travel demand such that in the twenty forty type horizon is going to need more additional travel lanes. The previous agreement had signal locations at twenty-six hundred south and forty-four hundred south. This agreement will honor those and keep them in the agreement and then of course identify a future potential interchange at twenty-three and one oh one and possibly where the future Western Corridor ties into the, to the corridor, into eighty-nine, ninety-one, and then one at Tenth West. Next slide. So parallel to this study, there was also a Logan Main Street study, and I want to just make you aware of this as well. This was more driven with Logan and the, this was Tenth West to North Logan. You may, some of you may have come to the open houses. There's been a lot of involvement on that. This is shifting a little gears from that eighty-nine, but I, I thought you might be interested in it. So it looks like the, where UDOT is headed in terms of the recommendation is to change the Y intersection to an X intersection. So instead of having it a, being a three-legged intersection, it turned into a four-legged intersection. Next slide. So there's a, a concept and it's just a rough out. It hasn't been designed, but that's one concept that they promoted as, as far. And the design of that is to really have a more elegant transition to get that east side travel demand to utilize our grid network for some of these other roads like Gateway Drive, Second East, First East, which obviously a lot of people use now anyway. So it transitions there, would have a connection there to Seventh South, the River Heights Road. And then in parallel with that, they synergistically works with, next slide, with the connection down south where Second East would be extended and essentially co-op Gateway Drive. Those two work together in UDOT's opinion to really have a big impact on Main Street. And UDOT, which is really unusual for them to commit state dollars on a non-state road, and it's in recognition that you can't do a lot to Main Street. You can't widen that blowout downtown, all that. So they're willing to say if these targeted strategic projects help Main Street that they're willing to fund them even though they're not on a state highway, which is actually quite unusual for UDOT to do that. But these two projects are ones that they seem to be zeroing in on as having merit and the biggest bang for the buck. The county executive and the council and, and others were instrumental in kind of advocating for funding for these, for the Logan Main Street project. So UDOT has about sixty-three million or sixty-some odd million set aside for a reconstruct project in Logan Downtown. That was kind of on the, on the radar all along, and that's a maintenance-driven one. But in parallel there, they're going to add an additional fifty-five million to do these additional projects that would help with that. The timeframe for that is, they said when they can cash flow it, but they've kind of talked in the twenty, twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight type timeframe. So I just want to give you an update of some of these studies that are happening. And if I had it my way, we wouldn't change Cache Valley and I, it's, it's a struggle to have interchanges because it's, it's, it represents the change we're encountering, but I wouldn't be doing my job if we're not sort of forward-thinking about these and trying to get ready for them. Any questions that I could help answer?
Maybe just to expound on what you just said, like what would you say to people who would say just widening the road just attracts more traffic?
So there's a, a concept of, and they call it induced demand, that you can never, if you're chasing congestion, you'll never win because you increase it and more traffic fills in and, and pretty soon you have more, you have congestion. And to them, I would say you're right. Inevitably, it's going to be utilized, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a, it's a futile effort because in doing that, you also add robustness to the system. You'd allow your grandkids to maybe have more mobility for longer than they otherwise would. You look at Gateway Drive, we built that road, and at some point it's going to congest back up. It's a road to Providence. It's going to be congested. But was it the wrong answer? In the interim, we've supported a lot of economic development. We've increased mobility and robustness to the system. And so it's just like Legacy Highway in Salt Lake. You know, I used to have an excuse to be late to meetings in Salt Lake, but now I don't because that has more predictability and dependability in the system. At some point, it's going to congest up and it's going to be, and, and someone could say that was a misguided project. You should have never done that because you're just back at square one. But in reality, you've, you've offered a lot of opportunities for travel, you've economic development, so it's a difficult thing. I, I, I don't know how you strike that balance. I do need, I do know though, that you want to be strategic about what you invest in and you don't want to just encourage sprawl or those sort of things. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Yeah, thanks for addressing that.
Any other questions?
So I've been in discussion with Wellsville on the R-cut. Is that just a Band-Aid because eventually you'll have to go to an interchange? Or are you pushing traffic to one or two other intersections just down eighty-nine, ninety-one?
So first of all, I don't work for UDOT, so, but it is a Band-Aid, but it's going to be a long Band-Aid. I mean, from UDOT's perspective, they have an untenable safety situation that has to be addressed. And that is compelling enough that they are proposing, at least in their mind, kind of the only solution they can come up with because they're, a signal, it's, it's too close to the, the one oh one and, and interchange is, is simply out of the question right now with the cost and the volumes there. So it's sort of a Band-Aid, but it'll probably be a Band-Aid we wear for quite a while.
Okay, thank you.
I know Wellsville doesn't like it and I don't blame them. It's, it's, it's a difficult thing.
Well, you have an intersection two blocks north of there, east, whatever you want to call it.
And sometimes we do worry about when you do things on one intersection, you've just created problems in others, but UDOT's confident enough that they think it'll work. But this, there's not many here, so this will be the first one in the valley. And, and that one will happen fairly soon, in the next couple of years.
Why am I having a hard, I don't know what this is.
Sorry. So Second East ends there, if you're coming through Logan, you're heading south. It essentially ends at Third South. It, it goes in a little subdivision, but it essentially ends at Third South. So this would essentially extend that road, which was the original plan even prior to Gateway Drive, extend that road across the river and shoehorned Logan City, made sure when they approved those, the River Woods Apartments, that they had a corridor through there. And so it will essentially co-op Gateway Drive and, and add that kind of connectivity. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I remember the Maverick is on the, on Third South, where the two Mavericks are.
Yeah, okay, I get that now.
So I will say on all, on these two, they're going to happen fairly quick, but there'll be an environmental process on those. So there, there'll still be, still be public involvement on how that's configured and what other options are. UDOT will engage in an environmental process.
And that lower part is River Heights? Well, that one part that goes through is River Heights?
Yeah, it goes, like the, there's a road along the river, I'm trying to think, and one side of the road is Logan and the other side is River Heights. It's actually not that much in River Heights. Most of it's probably in Logan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Now we will go to our Bear River Health Department Substance Use Disorder Treatment Budget Narrative, and Jordan Mathis is here. We have the, as the Bear River Health Department Director to present that.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. I'm going to just introduce this real quick and give you a quick update. Then I'll let the content experts present the area plan. Just to, to let you know, this is the substance use area plan. Next year, we will be presenting a combined mental health and substance abuse plan. The reason we don't have it combined yet is because we don't have our contract with Bear River Mental Health completed yet. That's close to being completed and executed to get us started in July and just wanted to give you that update there. And then I'll be back pretty soon to have you consider an appointment for our Behavioral Health Director position as required under the interlocal agreement. With that, I'm going to turn the time over to Jared, who's over the treatment side of the plan, and then Farren will address the prevention side of the plan.
First of all, thank you for allowing us the time to come out and speak with you. This is a fun new opportunity for me, and frankly, I believe it's something we should have been doing all along, and it's owing to Jordan and his incentivizing us to come out tonight to, and when I say incentivizing, it was not voluntary. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you tonight about this, the area plan. The state has tasked us with providing, again, an area plan which contains the strategies and the tools that we will use throughout Cache Rich and Box Elder County to make sure that we are providing services for substance use and upcoming mental health services in our catchment area. That area plan outlines in pretty good detail how we are able to provide services and use the state's funding to help provide services to those that struggle in our communities. The plan itself is a twenty-nine-page document. You'll be happy to hear that I'm not going to be going through each page of that document this evening. But I did want to take just a few minutes and talk a little bit about some of the changes this year. Next year, as Jordan mentioned, there will be some pretty significant changes in the presentation of this plan, but the format of the plan will change as well. The state is in the process right now of changing the format that they are expecting that plan to take as we submit it to them. The plan has been accepted by the state up to this point, and we are kind of coming to you after the fact. And we would, we would not like to do that in the future. We would like to make sure that we're coming to you before that plan is submitted. And we recognize that the Bear River Health Department nor Bear River Mental Health are the area authorities, but the area authority lies with the county councils and commissions. So we will get the cart back before the horse next year, or reverse that, yeah. So just in terms of some of the changes and things that we're going to be implementing on, that we have implemented this last year that are noted in the plan that was submitted are, this year we've made some significant improvements in some of the changes in treatment and curriculum and training that we've had, that we were able to offer at the Bear River Health Department. We've changed out some of the archaic substance use treatment modalities and integrated some newer, more evidence-based practices in what we're doing there, and we're very proud of that. Additionally, we've gotten several of our staff members, myself included, trained in some trauma-focused therapies. We recognize that a lot of the folks that have troubles with substance use are experiencing those problems as a result of some pretty in-depth traumas that they've experienced in their lives, and we're looking to kind of address the problem at its core. We've changed out some of the other group materials that we use as well to reflect more evidence-based practices in how we're going about treating some of our folks in our community. Additionally, I wanted to point out that we have continued to foster some community partnerships. We're proud of the connections that we have in our community with the Utah State University, Adult Probation and Parole, Cache County Probation, Division of Workforce Services, Utah Health Policy Project, which is a group that helps with eligibility for Medicaid, BRAG, and several others here in the community as well. We are grateful and recognize that we cannot provide all of these services ourselves. As such, and under the direction of our local AP&amp;P officers, we've begun offering a resource fair. We house that out at our office and it's offered once a month. It's a really cool process because it allows for those that are just leaving incarceration to come to us and kind of do a one-stop shop to get set up for Medicaid and get, get help with job and housing. And it's been a really cool opportunity to see people come and be able to access resources there. Additionally, we are continuing our use and distribution of naloxone in the community to help prevent opioid overdoses. We use both local and state grants, and we are, I think, probably one of the primary distributors of naloxone in the valley. Every single individual that comes to our program that goes through our intensive outpatient program receives an introduction to and an Narcan kit so that they are trained on how to prevent an overdose with them, whether it be themselves or their own families. We, we feel like that's a really important step in helping people to establish their sobriety and then maintain that over time. We are currently also at the Health Department under Jordan's leadership, looking at developing a public-facing dashboard that should allow people to access information about what services we're providing and some of the outcomes that we're seeing with the clients that we serve, and that should be available on the Bear River Health Department's website. We'll be able to access things like the frequency of use at both intake and discharge, the, the statistics on those that are completing treatment, improvements in housing and employment, as well as several other statistical outcome measures that will help people see kind of what people are getting when they come to treatment with us. Also, during this last little while, we have not had contracts for, for residential treatment. We have reestablished those partnerships with both Odyssey House and First Step House. They are also state audited organizations and we trust them, and we're grateful for the partnerships that we have with them there. We recognize that they have the same data and reporting requirements that we do, and so that's one of the reasons why we utilize some of those resources that are maybe a little bit more distant than local providers. Additionally, we will be reopening our Garden City office in June. It had been underutilized and during COVID, we primarily provided those services through telehealth services. And being able to get our license back up, and it is up now, and we are beginning to offer those services on a limited but a regular basis in Garden City is a, it's a, it's a win for us and a win for Garden City as well. Some of the other, I think, wins for us this last year have included, we received a grant from the state for nearly, nearly sixty thousand dollars that we've been able to utilize to help our clients secure safe and sober housing and to the tune of about twelve hundred dollars a month for clients parsed out over that sixty thousand dollar overall grant. It's helped a lot of people. And we know that one of the key features in keeping people clean and sober is the, having safe and sober living situations. And so being able to help out as people are first struggling to get clean and sober with some initial rent payments on some of their leases has been, it's been very well received. I think some of the last couple of little things here, we have a partnership with the First District Court in our Recovery Court program. Many call it Drug Court. Judge Cannel likes us to call it Recovery Court because it's a much more positive focus that way. Recently, our case manager, Suzanne Anderson, who's been our case manager with the Recovery Court, was doing such fantastic work in integrating and coordinating those services that she was asked by Judge Angela Fonsbeck to come over and provide some case management services for the mental health court as well, and we're proud of that. It's, it's a, it's an awesome program, and watching some of the folks that have struggled the very most make some of the most dramatic improvement has been very rewarding for us as well. I, I think it's important to note too, that in the last little while, we made some updates to our urine testing procedures, and now, we have always had the ability to test for fentanyl, but now we can do it in-house and we don't have to send those out, and that's nice too. So there are good things happening in the treatment, on the treatment front, and we look forward to sharing more with those, with you over the next... and we look forward to sharing more with those with you over the next few years. Please.
You mentioned you're changing therapies and modalities. What are you switching to?
Some of the treatment modalities that we are increasing, and not that any of the old ones that we had were bad, but they may have been more eclectic in their approach. Some of the new tools that we use are MRT programs, DBT groups, ART, EMDR. None of those acronyms mean anything to you at all, but what those acronyms are, they're generally treatment-related tools that have been very carefully scrutinized, and they are on the list of evidence-based practices that the state wants to see us using in order to show that we're actually practicing up to a standard.
Thank you.
Question with just some reduction in funding for other nonprofits and Planned Parenthood closing down. Do you anticipate an influx of, I guess, service requests? And also, is there opportunity for funding that may be sent to those locations for you to obtain grants or things like that?
We would certainly welcome the idea of investigating other grants that may be available to us, and we have done in the past as well. It is a tough time federally. We don't know what tomorrow's going to look like in terms of the funding that we are receiving right now. The word that we're getting is that the block grant dollars that are coming from the state, I hate to say safe, because nothing's safe, but it looks better for those right now. Medicaid is really what's more on the table. A lot of our clients, to the tune of over 50%, utilize Medicaid funding that way. And so there will be many more, I think, that do come and still utilize those services as we partner with Bear River Mental Health. Other thoughts or questions? I'd also like to introduce Farin Wies, who's here with the prevention side of our team as well. And he'll tell more about some of the prevention efforts that we've got going on, too.
Thank you.
Thanks again for letting us take a minute of your time. So the prevention side of the area plan is based on the science of risk and factor and protective factor-based drug prevention. And what that is, is we try to reduce the risk factors, those items in an individual's life that make it likely or enabling to engage in negative behaviors with substances, and then build on the protective factors, build those areas in a person's life that provide some protection from making those negative behaviors. One of the biggest changes in our section of the plan is building on community coalitions. We've had some really great success in our three counties of implementing those coalitions. We get a lot of partnership. This is a great place to live for a lot of reasons, as you know, but one of that is people are invested in their communities and preventing these types of problems. So we've got seven different community coalitions across the three counties that are following an evidence-based process to guide individuals' jurisdictions. We're just calling them a COE, Coalition, going off of a high school geographic area. So that's what those seven areas are based on. And we've had a lot of great support for those. The partnerships we have are valuable. That's where we get a lot of help. It takes a village. We've heard that before, and we rely on those partnerships. The schools, the law enforcement, fire EMS, healthcare providers, private and public agencies. We've had a lot of really good partners. And so that's our prevention, just a general quick overview, our prevention part of that area plan. Is there any questions that you have for me on that? One thing we'd like is we wanted to share, this plan has been presented to our Board of Health. We have the county executive from Cache County, Mr. Zook. We appreciate his service. Lee Perry from Box Elder County and Bill Cox from Rich County, who are on that board. They've gave a verbal approval and recommended that we take these to the counties for signature to have this approved. And so that's why we wanted to present this today and hope you'll be able to approve that. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we need to make a motion to approve the Bear River Health Department Substance Use Disorder Treatment Budget Narrative Three-Year Plan.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Bear River Health Department Substance Use Disorder Treatment Budget Narrative Three-Year Plan.
Thank you. In a second. Does anyone have any further discussion? No. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you for being with us today. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item seven on our agenda. And it's Resolution 2025-22, Appointments to Drainage Districts 3, 4, 5, and 6.
We've actually already approved 3, 4, and 5.
So now we're just doing...
Number 6.
Thank you.
District number 6.
District number 6. Thank you for the clarification.
I got on the phone, and I've talked with some other individuals, and there is a portion in all of the survey and everything that was done and presented in the boundaries and everything of the districts that they did up there. There was a little chunk that was inadvertently left out from those drawings, and it was kind of then sent in a little no man's land. And in reality, it should have been in area or district number 6. And, but it isn't yet. And that process has to now go through for those redrawings and for that legal listing then be brought into district number 6. And legally, you have to be in district number 6 in order to be able to be on the board. But I think that process is underway. We'll keep pushing it. It's a two-part process. One is the process from the county, working with the foresight engineering or surveying. And the other process is from the district number 6 itself. And, but they need a full board to get moving on their part. And so with that in mind, and I hate to, I know how the good ones were so encouraged and wanting to get inactive and get going on that board. And I've talked with the other board members, and they're so, the current past ones and that, and they would love to still rectify and work with you on getting your issues taken care of. But that little legal issue kind of basically does not allow you to be on that board at this time. But we get it fixed, and then those opportunities to serve will be down the road. So I would therefore then present, or go ahead and make the motion to present the names of Brandon Allen, Dennis Jackson, and Perry Early as the three representatives for District 6.
Andrews, are there pointed clarifications?
I was going to say, with the requirement by state law to have them all in resolution, those names are all included in Resolution 2025-22. It's just at the bottom of the page. So I believe the correct motion would be to approve the resolution instead of...
Did you name?
Yes, I mean, you guys can do that if you would like to as well.
So what we did on the other districts was by names, right?
Yeah, well, we approved, I thought we even by motion approved those last time.
Back in 2023?
No, last, two weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I brought up that there's a requirement by state law to be by resolution.
Well, then, I believe the other ones, District 3, the two candidates, they all include these in the motion.
Just the name of...
Pass them. District 3, Burke Pitcher, Cleve Givens. District 4, Robert Barlow and Adam Johnson. District 5, Sean Dent. Along with Brandon Allen, Dennis Jackson, Perry Early in District 6.
Sarah?
I'll second.
We have a second by Barbara. Any further discussion of the motion?
Oh, we have the motion to suspend.
Do you...
I'll move to suspend those rules, yeah.
Second still stands. Okay. So we have a motion to suspend the rules and to approve Resolution 2025-22 as the names are listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It was unanimous. Thank you. We move on to Resolution 2025-23. Was it last meeting or two meetings ago, we received the presentation by Chrissy? Yes, was that last meeting or two?
Last meeting.
Yeah.
She asked me to give you guys all that information that has been given to your iPads, you know, all the data. But our attorneys have very graciously been able to write a resolution that would provide approval to that for the executive to then sign.
Okay, and that will be signed by the executive. I since have received a letter from the mayor of Logan City, a letter of intent saying that the funds that they have in their, I don't know if the whole council was copied on that, but the funds that they had in their surplus fund would stay with the dispatch. And so that was my only hesitation that I had, or maybe even just follow-through that I wanted on that. So I would go ahead and accept a resolution to later be signed by the executive and entering that agreement.
I have a question. Does the council need to also adopt a resolution increasing the fee?
Well, it specifically mentions it in the resolution that it will be increased.
From 3 to 330.
Yeah.
I know it's mentioned in the interlocal agreement. That's an agreement between us and Logan, but I'm just wondering, maybe your attorney is weighing in on this. It seems to me like the council should also adopt a resolution increasing the fee. I don't know if this resolution...
Resolution on D says, whereas there has been an increased demand for dispatch services caused by population growth and an increased cost of dispatch services necessitating 10% increase in the assessment from $3 to $3.30.
Yeah.
So other than that?
Yeah, just, well, I don't know. If our attorneys think that that's okay, if that actually increases the fee.
Do you have a specific code section you'd like to point to or...
No, I'm just saying normally when we establish fees or increase fees, it's done by resolution. So I'm wondering if they need to adopt a resolution increasing the fee.
I think we can, I think the objective of this was to roll that all into one. So approving the agreement and increasing the fee, all in one resolution.
Okay. I just thought that that's what this was on the agenda, was the resolution to increase the fee. But this is, this is just, the ordaining clause just says that Cache County approves the drafted amendment and recommends that I sign the agreement, but it doesn't necessarily say that we are increasing the fee.
I don't know if I understand. I thought it says it in letter D.
Yeah, but that's just a recital.
Okay.
So, I don't know. I'm just asking if we need that. It seems to me like we should have a resolution saying that we're increasing the fee. Because I'm going to sign this and then give it to our finance department because they do the billing, but...
So like, adjust the fee schedule?
Yeah, yeah, exactly like we do on the fee schedule. This is my question, if we have to do that. Because when I saw this on the agenda, I thought that's what we were doing, was adjusting the fee. It doesn't look like that's what's in here. So I don't know. We can look at that later. What's on the agenda today can be approved, and I'll go ahead and sign it. But I'm just wondering if we need an additional step to make it fully compliant. And that can be looked into later.
Okay. We'll just address what is on resolution before us now that says we will enter into this, allow to approve and recommend signature of amendment, number one.
You guys could just pause for now. It holds to the next meeting.
We'd have to suspend the rules to...
Whatever the motion that wants to be made, I will accept a motion, whether it's suspend the rules or... Is there an urgency to this? Do you know?
I'll give us time to look into the thing.
I know that she mentioned that they had been to several most obvious...
I think you were the last ones to adopt this change.
I think it was July 1st that they were going to implement it, so we just have to have it done by July 1st.
I think we're okay to pass it for a couple of weeks, do the second week of June.
Okay.
If we need to get those questions clarified.
Okay.
But it looks to me like it says in D that the fee is increased, so...
Okay, that's fine. We can go ahead and just move this to the next council meeting. Okay. We'll move on to 7-C, Resolution 2025-25, Proposed Letter of Indemnification. And for that, I think our county attorney, Taylor Sorenson, will be addressing us.
Yes. If it's all right, I'll just do it from my computer right here. So this particular resolution, as you may know, Utah code requires that the county council pass ordinances or resolutions or policies regarding the management of real property owned by the county. And in this particular case, we have a piece of property that the county owns, which is adjacent to a different piece of property that is operating as a gravel pit under a conditional use permit. And it's been brought to the county's attention that there is access going across the county's parcel from this adjoining gravel pit parcel. And so if we want that access to continue, then there needs to be some sort of agreement in place between the county and that adjoining parcel to allow that use of public property. So what this resolution is for is to just put something in place. This is a temporary access agreement between the county and that adjoining parcel owner to create some boundaries and some legal protections for the county while a more permanent agreement is being negotiated and discussed. So it would indemnify the county if anything happens, if there's any accidents or anything while this particular property owner is crossing the property and makes clear that it's the county's property and that there's no easement or anything like that created on the county's property. So this is just management of the county's real property, a resolution for that particular parcel in Smithfield.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, why, how did this happen in the first place? Why did they start using county property without getting permission from the county?
Sure. You know, it seems, based on some investigation, that when the property owner filed for their conditional use permit, one of the conditions placed on them was that they needed to show that they had access to this property because it is landlocked away from some of the major roads. And my understanding is, talking to our civil attorneys, is that there was an agreement in place for a prior property owner with the county to cross over the county's property. Now, that agreement was non-transferable, so when that property was sold, the current property owner who now owns it thought that they had access across the county's property and was using that access. But it came to the county's attention that that access was continuing and that there was no agreement in place. So we're just trying to rectify that situation.
Has the property owner already agreed to sign their half of it?
We have to have discussions with them, and they are, so far as I know, amenable to signing this temporary agreement while we nail down a more permanent situation going forward.
And does the temporary agreement include like a rental fee or anything to use the property in the interim before a longer-term agreement?
No, it doesn't.
So they would just continue to use it?
It basically maintains the status quo, which is, they're not paying for it, but it would add additional legal protections if something did happen, for example, an accident on the county's property.
Okay, and where it's temporary, did it have a duration? I thought I...
Yes, if you read down through in the actual agreement, it does give you some deadlines. It says that the parties agree to finalize a comprehensive agreement in a later than 45 days after the effective date of this agreement, and to execute the agreement no later than 60 days after the effective date. And the parties can extend these deadlines on mutual agreement, not to exceed 30 days. So there is a cutoff there that we're trying to make sure that this happens in a timely manner to make sure that there isn't continued private use of a public resource without any compensation to the county or any sort of agreement.
Okay, I think this is my last question, but the previous property owner, how long were they... were they using it? Months, years?
I'm not aware of that, I would have to get back to you on that.
So how long has the current owner been using the county road?
The conditional use permit, my understanding is from twenty seventeen, so it's been some years.
Wow. They've been using the county property for free for that long?
So they're not mining gravel out of the county's property, they're just traveling across the county's property. So that's, that's something we'd have to address, so.
Who's been maintaining that road, the county, right?
So that particular road across the county's property accesses a couple of gravel pits, a Smithfield gravel pit, a gravel pit owned by the county, and then this adjoining parcel, which is also a gravel pit but privately owned. And so my understanding is the county's been maintaining that access point.
Why is the council-
But the part that's been driven on, on the county property has not been maintained by the county?
I'm sorry?
The, I don't want to call it a road, but the portion that has been traversed across the county property-
You can call it a road, it's a private road.
Okay. The part that has been traversed across the county, has not been maintained by the county. The part in our gravel pit that has been driven on has not been maintained by the county.
Uh, I'm not sure exactly which parts are being maintained by who, but it is all on the county's property, so, and I, so I'd have to figure that out for you.
Matt, Matt, do you know?
Could we invite Matt?
The original agreement that was done in nineteen ninety-three put that burden to maintain that road on the property owner that the access was granted to, so the county hasn't been maintaining that.
Taylor, why is the council approving, or why would the council be asked to approve this agreement? Were any of the previous agreements approved by the council?
I don't know about this nineteen ninety-three agreement, if it was approved by the council or not, but given that state code says that real property has to be managed by the county, and in the absence of an ordinance or some other policy that the council has promulgated, this is a one-off that we're managing this piece of property by resolution.
So are you saying that the council is adopting policy here?
No.
With this, about-
I'm not saying that.
So I'm just wondering, because-
So I'm saying that the council is adopting a resolution for an agreement for this particular piece of property. This is not a policy that governs all the real property in the county, it's not an ordinance, it's just affecting this one parcel in Smithfield.
Doesn't statute say that the executive is who is supposed to negotiate agreements and sign agreements?
My understanding is the executive will be hopefully signing this agreement, but management of real property in the county is managed by the county council.
Management is by the legislative branch?
That's my understanding in Utah code. I can pull that up for you if you'd like.
I'm just wondering, because statute says that I'm supposed to negotiate and sign these kinds of agreements, and if they're adopting something that makes it sound like that's the agreement and that's the only way it could be drafted, and what if we negotiated something different? What if we changed it from sixty to sixty-five days, for example, are you-
Well, in that case, then we would have to go back before the council to, which is why our legal team is moving forward on trying to create an ordinance to govern these types of situations in the future, so that we don't have to deal with these one-offs. But generally, real property and the management of real property is very clear under state code that it is managed by the county council.
Right now, there is, there is no legal access from that property. They have no legal right to go through the county road, right?
Correct, that is a private road, it's not for public access. And conditional use permits do not create legal impediments or easements or other rights of property across adjoining parcels. That's not the function of a conditional use permit.
And other, other places that we've had instances that someone was illegally going across a private county road or whatever, we've, often we've gated it and we just shut it down fairly abrupt.
We're done.
Why wasn't this one shut down when they didn't have any legal access to that?
Taylor, this section I'm referring to is seventeen fifty-three, three oh two.
Did I, I didn't get the answer to my question.
I'd like an answer to David's question.
Mr. Erickson, I'm not, I wasn't asked to figure out how to gate this property. The county is within its rights to gate the property and lock anybody out of it. What our team was asked to do was to facilitate making this access that this person has relied upon in the creation of their business and the creation of this gravel pit. They were looking for more of a solution to, because they have been using this access since twenty seventeen, but you are correct that the county is within its rights to lock that gate.
So if there is-
But that's not, that's not my decision to make.
If there is no agreement, the enforcement of a law is an executive function, and if there was no agreement, they would be within their right to shut it down tomorrow if they wanted it.
If there, if there is no agreement, then yes, the county could lock a gate tomorrow, and we would likely be sued, they would likely try and take us to court over it. I anticipate that we would be successful, but in an effort to avoid legal expense, typically it's best to seek negotiated solutions, seek compensation, for example, try and settle it. But as far as your original question, is the county able, under its rights, to lock this gate and keep everyone else out? Yes.
Are there any penalties because they didn't adhere to, you know, what should have been done with the original agreement? Are there any penalties that can be imposed?
So this original agreement that we're referring to actually never even applied to this new property owner, because the previous, this agreement was only applicable between the county and the former property owner, and it was non-transferable.
But the new county owner, or the new property owner, because they have been using this portion, are there any penalties or fines that can be assigned to that person for not, you know, bringing it up to date for their use?
Well, that's something we could definitely explore, if that's something that the council is looking for.
To seek back pay or something, but there's also the possibility that in good faith they were just using it because it's been used for the last, what, ninety-three, for the last thirty years, and maybe that, they were just carrying on what was already happening. So I, I don't know, if we're to the point where we're saying what we think right now, I would tend to be on the side of, yeah, let's have an agreement in good faith that we can get it resolved and there's a deadline, and we can work something out that's fair to both parties.
I found it quite interesting when I was looking through this agreement, it gives them amount of days, you know, to try to work things out here. They've had a lot of time to this point to work things out, and nothing's been done. But I tell you, when we were over in Trenton, we had a pit over there that, boy, as soon as we found out a few things, ran right over there, gated and shut that thing right off, just like that. And they, we didn't give them any time to try to negotiate something and make something better over there.
Was there a history of usage prior to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That one was a little different, they were actually taking our rock.
By permission.
It's different. In this one, they're taking rock from their own property.
Yeah, but it was still by permission, but we shut it down because of liability and, you know, and safety over there too. And so I just find it, I guess it's good for us to treat everyone the same.
I agree with that, and I think if they're using our property and we can find a solution where we get fairly compensated for the property and we're dismissed of our legal liability, then that could be a potentially good revenue source and create an amicable relationship. So I'm not opposed to exploring something like that, I guess is what I'm saying.
You mentioned this property was landlocked? Because I think they're, I think that the same owner has right that goes all the way down and right to-
Yes, there are multiple parcels owned by the same owner, so if in the future this particular person decided to create a different access or that was not over county property, I'm not an engineer or part of UDOT, I mean, that's, I'm sure something that they're probably exploring at this point.
Does this open up a precedence? Because just like Dave mentioned in Trenton, what if somebody else decides, okay, I'm just going to go ahead and use the county road and not be, you know, have any responsibility taken for that? What if we offer this to one person and then somebody else tries to use it all the time?
Councilwoman Tidwell, I think the precedent for a long time in Cache County is that people in Cache County have had their way with Cache County as an entity, taking advantage of our roads, our properties, without due compensation or without any legal guidelines. And so, you know, our office has kind of been a stick in the mud as we're pushing more towards formalizing these types of agreements, and so we're trying to push back against that status quo, which I think you would recognize already exists. So as we push towards making these sorts of adjustments, having an ordinance so that we do have a process, that everyone is treated the same, I think that's a goal that we're all working towards. And in regards to your question, David, seventeen fifty-three twelve, specifically part four, the county legislative body shall provide by ordinance, resolution, rule, or regulation the manner in which property shall be acquired, managed, and disposed of. The county legislative body is more than capable, under Utah code, to manage the real property of the county.
So that was my question, if this was a policy that was being adopted? And so that's what you're saying is, yes, this is a policy for this one property?
I think that it's a resolution being adopted for the management of this one particular parcel, yes.
All right, that was my question, thanks.
Is there a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-five?
Prior to any motion being made, I intend to recuse myself to avoid any conflict.
Thank you.
Well, I would move to, yes, we'd have to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Suspend the rules, pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, the indemnification of regarding parcel oh eight, oh four four, oh oh one four.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Having none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recusing. Thank you. Now, we have some, we have one pending item to address. This is eight A. We will go ahead and discuss the Powder Mountain Development Agreement, resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, the trail system at Art Park. Do we, who do we have here with Development Services? Thank you so much.
Connor Smith, Assistant Planner with Development Services.
Thank you. So the last meeting, we, at my request, I wanted some additional verbiage included in this resolution to ensure that there was public access on the Art Trail, as that was what was being presented to us.
Right.
And seeing that we didn't have that, Brooke with Powder Mountain went back to get some additional verbiage that would satisfy that, and if you could address that, please.
Yeah, so some additional verbiage was sent to us. The last I heard it was still working its way through the executive's office, but I imagine that Brooke could present it here today. That's just my last understanding where it's at, is basically it's just kind of a-
Okay, okay, thank you, Connor. We did receive, we did receive additional verbiage to be substituted into the agreement. And Brooke, would you be able to address us in the additional verbiage that was included?
Thanks for having us again here tonight, Brooke Kuntz, Powder Mountain. So we do have just a couple maps too, if that would help, I don't know if it's going to, they haven't changed since last-
They're always good.
Okay, so as soon as Andrew has a chance to get those up, we'll walk through them. So at the last meeting, we heard loud and clear the request, at least from some council people, that it was of interest for us to take a stab at clarifying, confirming, public access to these non-winter trails. And so I know it didn't get to you till a little bit later, but it was shared, I think, last Thursday or Friday directly to all council people, so that you may have a little time in front of this meeting. I know it was a long weekend, but that does hopefully just that, and provide the language that you were looking for. Because the original language that was part of the application that you saw had the intent of doing that, but it included erroneously on my part the word, the word "may" instead of "shall" or some more legal, thanks for the attorney's being here, language. And so the, this language, thank you so much, if you would go to the next slide, was provided in the email I sent to you. It has been reviewed by Andrew Crane from your legal department, and he, as you saw, if you had a chance to read the email that I provided you, that from the legal department's standpoint, the language was appropriate. And I guess the question in front of you is if this language met the standard you were looking for. I could read this into the record, or if you wanted to take some time to take a look at that. The key words in this notice are that, first of all, we not only go so far as to describe what a non-winter trail is, but by giving you dates, and so it's, it's not ambiguous that we're just going to say, oh, it's two weeks in the summer or something like that. We also identify some of the reasons why things could be happening on a trail, like it needs to get rebuilt, why it wouldn't be open, but that doesn't conflict with it being public, it still would be a publicly accessible property and trail. So I hope that this language gets you to address the concern regarding public access. And again, I apologize because I thought in my previous, what you had in front of you last time was strong enough, but while I was standing up here and thinking about it, I realized the "may," and I don't know if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, I think this may have it.
The last sentence.
The last sentence was what we had, "may be opened." And it was a good catch that that was not as strong as the language that we're proposing now. So that's what's in front of you. I would eliminate this language, replace it with the stronger public guarantee language, and then let's, just to be clear of what we're asking for, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, Andrew. We'll go to another, actually, that's just a description of kind of the type of trail that it's meant to be pretty accessible by most people who can hike. And then you go down to the next, that's the general area, and then the last slide though is what we're really talking about, is the nine point two plus miles that are shown on the left-hand side in red, and then we tried to blow those up for you to create this art loop area a little bit easier to see on the right. And so these would be the trails that would be available per the language we're suggesting.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Brooke while she's standing? Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Does this add a whole nother level of liability to you as private landowners?
Yes and no. Thank you to the state of Utah, and please make sure, if this ever comes up, you thank our legislators, because we are actually one of the strongest states in the country to, I think it's a try to enhance and support private property owners like us who allow the public on your property. And so if you're on this property, like we're suggesting, without a ticket because you're walking for free and you're accessing these trails, there is a very high level of protection currently in place for the state of Utah. However, if we were to charge just to access the trails, then that liability, there's still some, but it's not as high of a protection. And so it's a really wonderful thing that we have this, also for mountain biking, so.
Interesting, thank you.
Came out with that Gwyneth Paltrow case, remember that?
That's game.
That topic came up, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll be back if you need me.
Thank you. This change in the verbiage, I think, satisfies the hesitancy- This change in the verbiage, I think, satisfies the hesitancy that I had on this. So I would be willing to entertain a motion if there was any other, I don't think there was any other takeaways or further work to be done by the developer. Am I correct?
There's a lot of reasons to close it down. I mean, special events is pretty vague, but I don't know that I'm going to let that hold everything up.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash nineteen as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear you say aye? Okay, so, and any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay. So that's four in favor and two opposed. Yes, you got the names?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item nine. A, letter A. America Two-Fifty in Cache County. Barbara, is this, are you prepared to speak to, oh, Andrew, excuse me, Barbara.
No, not me. Sorry.
Sean, I like the ringtones.
It's Sean.
The Polar Express is in town.
It's very pleasant. Thank you.
I believe.
Nice diversion. I thought it was part of your presentation. I know, I thought it was you.
No, goodness, no.
Seventeen seventy-six going on in here.
Oh, no, no, I'm not as much as, I'm just saying, you're sorry to disappoint. But yes, so the matter I have to present on is the America Two-Fifty. It's just, how do I say it? A lot of the council members, you guys were present in, at the UAC conference in St. George to hear someone from the state talk about the America Two-Fifty initiative. But for those who weren't, America Two-Fifty is a movement to essentially establish some sort of organized and ongoing celebration of America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, which will be twenty-twenty-six. And the state has kind of signed onto the, yeah, excuse me, signed onto the initiative. And so specifically, the America Two-Fifty Utah Commission, established by Governor Spencer J. Cox and the Utah State Legislature, it's leading kind of the effort for Utah itself. And they've kind of delegated a lot of that to the counties themselves. The initiative, yeah, the initiative aims to do more than just celebrate. It's about kind of also celebrating about history and kind of like, how do I say it? Ensuring that there is not just, how do I say it? There's inclusion of all different municipalities and interest groups, such as universities, nonprofits, that type of thing. So essentially, what would the county council would have to do is pass a resolution establishing their own America Two-Fifty County in, in Cache County. One of the commissioners from Washington County was kind enough to provide me the resolution that they passed. And I've been working to essentially model that one into one that could be passed by the county council. It would just be a body that would have ideally some council members as well as different stakeholders from the community, whether that's someone from USU, whether that's someone from Logan City or any other type of group within the county, just to organize some sort of celebration and commemoration of America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth year of independence. So from, I've, I've been talking with someone from the state about it and he said that the governor would prefer that all of those who want to sign on do so before July of twenty-twenty-five. So that gives about a month. And I believe during the next council meeting, I should be able to present a resolution and hopefully some sort of logo agreement. Also still talking with him about that, so.
So the first step is we establish ourselves as an America Two-Fifty County and by resolution?
Yep.
And then we establish some committee?
Yeah, you can do both of those at the same time, from what I understand. Yeah.
And what are we, we're giving permission for them to use the Cache County logo as something we would grant them?
Well, actually, we would be taking the America Two-Fifty logo, the one up there, and then just like adding like Cache County under it. So it would-
And then, is there a financial ask as well?
Actually, there's not. The America, the Utah Two-Fifty Community Committee, it may give up to a stipend of three thousand dollars. And if we brand our own merch, whether that's hats, buttons, shirts, that type of thing, the county could make money off of that, from what I've been told, so. Yeah.
You're saying there's revenue?
Yes, yes. If that's what's going to get you guys to pass it.
Okay, so today, we just need to discuss it and, and we will have a resolution coming in next meeting.
Hopefully, yes.
Cool. I think, I'm excited. Except for I really don't want to call it the semi-quinsentennial.
Yeah, it's a bit of a mouthful.
Rolls right off the tongue.
Yeah, we'll just call it two.
Yeah.
Well, they have it in here, semi-quinsentennial.
Yeah, means half of five hundred.
Yeah, it's not very fun.
Yeah, I agree. Do you guys have any questions for me that I can find out for the next council meeting or?
Is every county that does this doing something on the same day? Is that what they're asking or what?
So it's, for a lot of them, it's not happening just on July fourth of twenty-twenty-six. It's happening like in the months leading up to July fourth. So I know that, for example, Washington County is going to have some sort of, I don't want to call it a ball, but it's some sort of dance of some sort, a gala, I believe. And I think that's going to be happening before the fourth, so.
I want to see Dave dance.
They are, they are suggesting that on July fifth, which happens to be a Sunday, that they have a big potluck gathering.
Yep, that too.
After the Fourth of July holiday.
Like a potluck gathering here at the county grass?
Wherever we want to have it. Or each community can have their own.
Yep.
Gotcha. I was going to say, I don't know if I want to eat at a giant potluck. That sounds fun.
Yep, I'm, I'm personally all for it, so.
I think it's an awesome idea.
I think it's a great celebration. Anytime, celebrate.
So this committee would come up with like cool ideas. Maybe we do a dance, the Lee Hall, and call it the Red, White, and Blue Dance or something.
Yep, and I know that Washington County, I think every county that passes their own participation in this effort chooses like a theme of some sort. I know Washington County chose the theme of America's County. But I know some counties are going for more of a historic approach and, you know, kind of just presenting off historical information, insights, and exhibitions, that type of stuff. So it could be really anything, but I'm all for celebrations, fireworks, that type of stuff personally, but.
I think we have lots of opportunity to-
We had a good committee. They could do a good job of fundraising, with local businesses.
Exactly, yes.
I think, I know some people I want on the committee.
Then we could promote it in the parades and everything that we have.
I think there's only a couple here that were at the two-hundred-year celebration.
Did you celebrate, did you celebrate the first light at the same time?
And it was, it was great.
They have the flag with the circle.
I remember, what was it, the quarter that came out?
How many stars were on that?
I don't know, not very many.
Years ago, I was here.
They were good times.
It's okay, we can tease.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrew. That's great. We're excited. And we got to get started on this so that we can- Full steam ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Nibley Heritage Days Parade is June twenty-first. You can go ahead and put me down. I will be in attendance to that parade.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else want to commit?
I'm planning on it at this point. I should be there.
I can, I can go on parades as long as I can ride. I can't run a lot of times.
You're done?
Done with running for a little while.
But we have the-
But not because I have short legs.
The normal parade route is-
Coming after age, physical appearance.
Well, a lot of times, the vehicle gets ahead and I've had to run forward to it and-
But we do have a truck. Or a side-by-side or-
Yeah, I, I would like to participate as long as I can ride.
Perfect. And then the Hyde Park Velvet Highway Parade.
I would do that one as well.
Is that their heritage day? So there's city celebration?
That's what they're calling it these days.
Do you know why it was velvet?
Because they're bougie?
Yeah, yeah, that's why.
That's the first time that's ever been said in this county meetings.
It's because it's the route, center streets throughout, the cows would take, come up and down the road from pasture in the morning and then bring it back in the evening.
What happened to the velvet?
George Costanza?
The road was nice and green and soft.
The road was freshly coated in regular intervals.
With velvet?
And I'm not making this up. That's why they call it that.
I've never known cows to have-
From Hyde Park to get that one.
I, Hyde Park and I don't get that one. Yeah, I mean, I follow why they're saying it. I don't understand why we're calling it that.
Okay, well, um-
I'll be there anyway.
That's two-part advance.
And then there is the Clarkston Point Express Days.
What did that?
Isn't it toward the end of June, I believe? I can't remember right off.
We got a lot of celebrations. On the Fourth of July, the higher Fourth of July, if we're going into July, we got the higher Fourth of July.
Let's start putting all those on here.
There's going to be the twenty-fourth of July parade also here in Logan.
And then the twenty-fourth in Logan.
Yep.
So we got lots of events. And North Logan, North Logan.
North Logan has twenty-fourth, yep.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, they're two hours before the Logan one.
And what's this, what's the other, Lewiston has the fourth.
Lewiston and higher on the fourth.
They both have the fourth. Google, yeah, they'll help you.
Put them all in there.
All of those states. Okay, so-
I was going to say-
But the first one, it looks like, is the Nibley Heritage Days.
Get the numbers or get us registered for those early.
Okay. We're going to look up half of them, so.
Does anybody, we'll start with council member reports. We'll start with Mark.
The only thing that's taking place, well, I guess two things to summarize. But the executive mentioned the CEO board meeting took place last week. We had the annual training that's required and discussed a couple items. But, and then also a update on the county library. A proposal for lease agreement has been submitted to Providence City. Looking at that. They will wait for their feedback.
Thank you. Dave?
I don't want anything.
Nothing. Nolan? Keegan?
COSAC, the Open Spaces Board, they just asked, they had some questions about the recent property acquisition. So I just sent them a map that Executive Zuck sent me. The airport board is, took public comment last time on adding a seat to the board for USU. That discussion is still up in the air. Some of the things I'm looking into are the taxes that the city and county generate and how much every entity is contributing. So just following that and received a letter from a citizen about the point-three percent tax. So responded to that. I just maybe, I'll use this opportunity to say, we like hearing from our residents, whether it's positive or negative. I think that's who we're here to serve, so happy to respond. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that we would encourage feedback. That's all.
Thanks. Barbara?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I don't have anything to report, but I know that Sandy did have, she sent out an email about establishing our committee, excuse me, the study committee. And she had some names that she wanted to present, but process hasn't quite been finished yet. So we do need to have resolution to actually establish the committee, which we'll be working on to present in the next meeting to establish a committee by resolution. And then we can nominate those that we think we would like to serve as well as receive the nominations from the COG. In addition to that, Sandy, I'll reference to the letter again that she wrote to the council. There's been some messaging from the state tax commission that hasn't been exactly clear about the increase in tax. And so she's working with Bryson on making sure that we can have our businesses their, their correct information as quickly as possible. So that's all that I know that Sandy wanted to address with the council and I don't have anything additional. Having, now we can move to item number eleven. If there's a motion?
Move to go into executive session for the discussion of the purchase, of the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water right, water shares, or discuss the proposed development agreement, project proposal, or financing proposal related to the development of land owned by the state.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nolan. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to executive session in this room.